Are you optimistic for the future?
Am I optimistic?
I think you have to say you are because you're an elected official.
Some days, not all the time.
Some days I don't feel so great. I feel like maybe we're in a bad place.
We are in a bad place. I don't know that I'm always optimistic. You know, and this is the thing, right? Like, I feel like sometimes I really struggle to go out in public. I really struggle to go to events and see people and do the thing. Because I get asked all of the time, like, "Oh, how's the job?" Like, "What are you doing?" Like, "What do you feel good about?" "What are you proud of?" And frankly, most of my job is like trying to get bad things to not happen.
We're rolling. We are rolling.
This is a real, real, real thing. Real, real, real thing. I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today. We're in the Wedge Neighborhood right now, right now, right now, right now, right now, right now, right now.
Okay, Mike, we're coming up on Milk Jam. And hopefully, if my new and improved guest is there, I will be able to kick you out of this seat. Hot guest coming through.
No, I think, like I said, Aisha would be an improved guest, and I wouldn't blame you at all.
Let's get in the shade. I'm feeling...
Sure.
Getting burned.
There she is, right there, anyway. So you found a better guest?
I did, yeah. Mike, we found a better guest, you're gone.
Well, I appreciate the time, and I don't blame you for shifting.
We are not live broadcasting. I'll have to edit it together and make sure the audio syncs up.
So we'll come back, right?
We will come back. I'm not gonna run away with you.
Who knows, man, you know? These days...
It's kinda crazy. It's very congested.
Now, first of all, I heard that... I heard that... Like, you know that I invented the Chatmobile?
Did you invent it?
For open streets, right?
Did you invent it? I thought Betty came up with that. You invented it?
Well, I implemented a idea.
I do remember it being used for your campaign.
Yes!
How does the size of it feel? Is that a good length?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. I can make it work.
Okay, I think I should introduce you. This is the Wedge Live...
Oh, this is what we're doing.
We're back on the Wedge Live Podcast.
Okay.
I'm your host, John Edwards, and my guest is Aisha Chugtai, Ward 10 City Council member. You represent this area.
That I do.
How does it feel to be back on Open Streets on Lindell Avenue?
You know, I love Open Streets. I love Lindell Avenue. I'm happy to be back. Happy to not be campaigning.
Yeah, although you kind of are campaigning. There's an election next year.
Well, as you can see, there's no yellow sticker, but there are bike earrings, so... Doesn't sound like I'm campaigning.
How well did that work out for Lisa Bender, the bike earrings? Although, I don't know if she wore bikes.
I think she just rode a bike. That's the difference.
She was the bike lady. Are you now the bike lady?
I'm...
Oh, you're not the bike lady?
I'm the bus lady, first of all. Buses are for equity.
Making a play to be the bus lady.
Yeah.
I liked your bus, exhorting the city council to support full-time bus lanes. I enjoyed that.
Thank you.
Should we pedal?
Sure, yeah, let's do it.
Okay.
All right.
Oh, it's a little hard to get started.
Oh, my God.
I'm gonna have to bring the pedal back so I can get a good push.
Okay. All right, there we go.
Okay, there we are.
Okay, we'll be right back!
Right back. How long do you have to give me?
I don't know. How much time do you want?
A couple blocks. It'll take a while.
Okay, yeah, sure.
So what is the bane of your existence right now?
What is the bane of my existence?
As a city council member?
The lack of a plan around a strong mayor system, high Wintana, and... Just turning every... Anytime, you know, like... The wealthiest and most powerful people in our city don't like a thing. They just say, "Oh!" It's kinda like a trump card, but it's like, "Government structure. Government structure," you know?
Yeah.
That kinda sucks.
There was a lot of...
Too bad. Are you doing this? Oh, my God, hi!
Tell him to have some lemonade or water if you need it.
Oh, my God, stop. That is so sweet. How are you both? I know, thank you.
This is the bus council member, not the bike council member.
Yeah, we're the... Yeah. The bus lady? Yes, multimodal, that's right.
All right. It's been very difficult to podcast because you are constantly getting stopped.
Yeah, so sorry. It's gonna happen a lot.
Even a low-level celebrity like myself, you can't go very far.
That's funny.
So, we were talking about the bane of your existence and government structure, and I noticed that...
Well, let's not run these people over.
So, question two had a lot of, "Where's the plan? Where's the plan?"
Yeah.
The real "where's the plan" question is question one, strong mayor.
Question one!
Because city council really has been hobbled in terms of its ability to legislate. The mayor is saying, "I've got 20 people reporting to me, this is unsustainable."
Yeah.
And at any point, did we consider that maybe we should have phased in the strong mayor thing until there was an actual plan to make it workable?
Yeah, I mean, or like, you know, I think at any point, did we consider that perhaps the problem with our government isn't that... You know, isn't that... It like, the org chart isn't favorable, but rather that, like... It is... It is... At times implicitly and other times explicitly run by, like... The wealthiest people in the city, you know, like... Maybe that's why nothing works.
So, the city coordinator thing?
Yeah.
You were like, "Let's just take the vote." You didn't want the delay.
Well, so here's the thing, you know, I think that... I mean, if we're all friends here, you, me, and your friends. Hi! How are you? Oh, my God, look at this dog! Penrietta, stop it! Hi!
This is Aisha.
Hello.
I talk about constantly.
See, you're nice.
And then John, the man behind Wedge Live. Big fan of the cats.
But if you had to rank us on a tier of like Minneapolis celebrity, I know you introduced Aisha first. I assume it's the reverse.
John's feeling for her, because every time we stop, people come to say hi to me, and John's like, "Well, I'm a low-level celebrity too."
Well, you have your profile picture as a logo. What do you expect?
Hi!
Find me on YouTube.
Yeah, see, concerned.
We're gonna go back to podcasting.
Okay!
Bye!
What were we talking about before this?
City coordinator.
City coordinator, Heather Johnston, yes.
Interim?
Intro.
Nominated to be permanent?
Yes. Yes, so here's the deal. I walked in not... You know, like Elliot Payne brought the first amendment forward, saying like, "Hey, we should delay this thing until the HR investigation is complete." And then we had, like, the vice president of our council say, you know, more or less the same thing, but just not, "Let's not wait until the HR investigation is complete. Let's wait until... Until, uh, two weeks from now, or three weeks from now, and take this issue on again." The thing is, like... And then we had the audacity, and then, you know, and then our mayor said, like, "Well, you know, I'm fine. I support a three-week delay, but I'm just saying, this position might not exist in three months." And I think... I just think it's like really incredibly disingenuous to say, like, "Something is gonna change in three weeks that's gonna allow us to better make this decision."
Let's turn away from this crowd.
Yeah. Okay, all right. I don't know, I just, I... I... Hi! We have to stop again.
We're podcasting. Who did you recognize first? Okay.
That's a lie, and you know it. Another example of us coddling white men's feelings. Thank you.
Thank you. You're thanking me or her? Okay.
Wow! Wow!
So, a parallel I see with the strong mayor debate, and I constantly go back to the strong mayor election conversation.
Yeah.
Where anonymous department heads were complaining about how unbearable it was to have 14 bosses. And they had to be anonymous to protect them from the professional consequences of doing public criticism. You've got a large number of black and brown staff now.
Yeah.
Talking about how unbearable it is, the racism with...
Like current employees, multiple of them.
Putting their jobs...
Unprecedented stuff.
At risk.
Yep.
To complain about how we do it, and it seems like the question is, how seriously do we take this compared to how seriously we took, like, the government structure change that was meant to serve, like, the chamber?
Well, and I think beyond that, the real question to ask is, we have, like, all of our black and brown staff, like, a large amount of staff who are predominantly black and brown, coming to us, saying, "I can't do this job under this person. They have made it impossible for me to produce the things that I need to produce in order to serve my community. There is a way in which I am treated." And then Minneapolis residents are treated, that is as a result of, like, a toxic and racist environment within this department. And months of inaction from this person who these specific allegations have been brought to their attention, and she has done nothing about it. And then, we have, and then, you know, and like, these are the same folks who have filed HR grievances, who have, like, gone to the Minnesota Department of Human Rights to say, "Hey, like, I think I'm, you know, I'm being mistreated in my workplace. I think I'm experiencing discrimination and retaliation in my workplace." They've done all the things that you can do, and the last thing that, like, they can do at this point is come to us and say, "Hey, I work for this person. Please don't appoint them."
Yeah.
You know, and like, if at this point, after all of that, we're still willing to say, like, "No, actually, you know, we think that this woman's fine, you know, of course, we think racism's bad, but like, you know, what's one woman got to do with racism?" First of all, have you met white women?
Yeah.
Secondly, like... At this point, like, what type of protections do our staff of color have? Or, like, people of color in the city who frankly experienced the same type of way, this pattern with the city of Minneapolis, right, coming and saying, "Hey, like, the city and its specific departments, like the Minneapolis Police Department, engage in racist behavior all of the time. Can you please do something about that?" And then our city leadership comes and says, "Well, I'm sorry, you know, we don't really know that the racism is all that bad. We don't really know that you can prove to us that this racism is real."
I mean, we have the example of all the, of nearly all the employees in the Division of Race Inequity leaving the city.
Yeah.
For what I think is similar reasons.
Yes. And all of those folks wrote a letter. It was published in Racket. Earlier this year.
So it's not theoretical.
No, no, it's real. Like, that's why people left, because it's a racist and toxic place to work for people of color.
If we have more of an exodus of staff who are doing what I think people would agree is good work for the city, you have the example of a behavioral crisis response team that Brian Smith, who leads that...
Director of our Office of Performance and Innovation.
And who leads that, says, "The only good work that has come in this moment..."
Yep.
"...has been what we do."
Yep.
We are missing out on a lot. Speaking of this as wanting the city to function well, like, if you want this good work to continue...
Oh, my God, I went to high school with that person. So sorry, they walked by.
What high school did you go to?
Mankato West.
Okay. So, like, Tim Walz was your neighbor? Is he from Mankato?
Yeah, he is from Mankato. He was my neighbor for a period of time.
I don't know what to say about Tim Walz. Do we like Tim Walz? I don't really talk about state politics. You don't like Tim Walz?
No, I used to do state politics, and I think he, like, hates the people in Minneapolis, and he shows it in his actions all of the time.
You worked for the other candidate?
Oh, not as long. Aaron Murphy, back in the day.
I'm showing my ignorance.
Well, I worked at SEIU, and we worked in state politics all the time. We did a lot of, like, state-level lobbying and...
You know the thing about politics is, you gotta, like, be friends with everyone?
No, that's not true.
It feels like that, though. I don't like it.
I'm sure it does. Like, we live in Minnesota. Everybody feels the need to be friends with everyone. But, you know, some people just hate us, and like, we don't have to be kind to people who hate our humanity.
I kinda enjoy that perspective, because I'm not friends with everyone.
I know.
And that's their fault, not mine.
Sure, 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 sure.
I didn't do anything. What did I do?
Oh, gosh.
So are we gonna get the full-time bus lane on Ennepin Avenue?
That depends. We should ask our Public Works Director and the mayor of Minneapolis.
I feel like not putting it on the Public Works Director, though, as much as I have my complaints. Because I wanna put it on the city council, like...
What?
This is up to you guys.
Yeah, and like, our Public Works Director is telling us we don't have the authority to do it.
Yeah.
And she works for one person, that's the mayor.
Yeah.
And our Public Works Director, you know what I mean, like, it's just, like...
So are we getting anywhere in terms of...
Those are some of the... Like, we gotta treat, like, people who are real, like, decision-makers on a thing, like they are the decision-makers on that thing.
Yeah. How do you get around on a daily basis? Are you walking a lot?
I take the bus. I take... I drive.
People drive. It's a fact of life.
Yeah, I do.
I feel like people are ashamed to tell me that they drive places.
Why? I'm not ashamed to say that I drive.
People, well, some, not you, but people are like, "Don't hold it against me."
Why?
Everyone who is advocating for street improvements, very rarely ever, they not have a car.
Right.
Rely on a car occasionally, so...
Right. Yeah, I drive, like, I'm... Like a lot of other people, I do. I was like the first person, like, "Well, there's four kids," like, whatever. I like, grew up in a small town, you know, whatever.
The reason I...
Too bad, it's like six times faster to drive places instead of, like, taking the bus, like...
If we made it more...
Maybe if it was easier, more people would do it. Wow!
Are you a fan? I think I've already asked you this. I'm not gonna ask you this again.
No, 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 go ahead. Am I a fan?
Go into your love letter to Open Streets, how much you love it.
My love letter to Open Streets. Dear Open Streets, dearest Open Streets. Thank you.
This is the closest thing you'll get to experiencing, for me, driving and trying not to run over someone.
Love that. All right, let me finish my love letter, though. Dearest Open Streets, I love you so much. XO, XO.
What do you love about it?
Gossip Girl. What do I love about Open Streets?
Yeah.
I don't know. I'm like, I like this, like, the, like, street vendor stuff. I don't know. I like, I... Oh, there's Tom Olsen. He likes Ennepin Avenue, I think.
Who?
Tom Olsen, from our Parks Board.
Oh, yeah.
I like that you can, like, walk around on, like, this very busy street and, like, just run into people. I think I'm like... I think I... Oh, that's Leba. Have you ever heard the song "Somali Homies"?
No.
Okay, well, this is no longer relevant. Anyway.
Can I tell you what I like about it?
Yeah.
All their street festivals are very, like, drinking-focused. It's all about getting intoxicated. Like, Grand Ole Day, I went to that a couple of times.
Okay.
Feels like it's all about getting drunk.
Okay.
And this feels more, of course, people are drinking here, but there's, you know, it's... You can bike it. Families are out. It's more diverse in the interests that people have. People are selling stuff. It's a more laid-back kind of festival, and like what you said, you run into a lot of friends here. This is a friendly crowd. Nobody's gonna heckle you here.
I wouldn't say that.
Have you been heckled?
Oh, yeah.
Here?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Oh, I'm so sorry, we're just...
I often forget that I'm a white man, and when people tell me stories about, like, whether it's my spouse getting harassed on the street when I'm not around. That kinda stuff happens.
Yeah, all the time, I'm sure. Yeah, no, just last year at Open Streets, I got, like, yelled at, like, by so many different people. But it was also, like, a really awesome day. I, like, got, it was like, it was cold. I got to see so many kids. And, like, met so many people that I didn't know were gonna, like, support me or vote for me, who did.
Yeah, that feels good.
And, like, that was really awesome, and like, a bunch of people who, I don't know, I mean, I feel like a part of a part of doing this job that's new for me is, like, people just come and, like, tell you things about their life, about, like, what they're struggling with, and like, they try to find some type of connection to what you're doing in that, you know, and like, and like, the spectrum of that is super real, right? Like, from, like, "Well, I feel unsafe, and I think that, like, you're not doing enough to make me feel safer, and if something bad happens to me, that's on you. That's your personal fault." To, like, listen, I like, I, like, really struggle to, like, be able to afford to stay in this community, or I'm a worker, and I've been exploited in my workplace, or whatever it might be, and like, "Thank you for fighting for me. Thank you for talking about the things that, like, upstuck my life." Are we about to play a game of chicken with, like, the next car? Like, is that what's gonna happen?
I just wanna get away from the music so I can hear.
Oh, I see, I see, I see.
Okay, we can slip it. So...
Yeah, I don't know.
In your job now, where do you surprise... We talked about what's irritating you. What do you feel empowered by or surprised by, like, "Wow, I really have this power that I maybe didn't realize I would have coming in to really..." What are you surprised you can be effective at, like, without red tape in your way? Like, I could really jump in and change this thing and do a lot of good now that I have this power?
I mean, I think that, like, the strength of my work has always been in, like, relationship-building, and like... I think that in this job, being able to lean on that... Hi! We're gonna turn around real quick.
Yeah.
Being able to, like, lean on that, being able to, like, you know, better, like, better, you know, have just like, an office, and like, hold on, we're gonna come back to this conversation in just a second.
Okay.
What's been good? Oh, God, so little. We'll be right back after a brief message from our sponsor.
As you may have noticed, this is Pedal Pod Week on the Wedge Live Podcast, bringing you the world's first pedal-powered podcast studio. All of these episodes, recorded entirely from Open Streets on Lindell Avenue, are brought to you by Dispatch. This month, Dispatch lays out some fashionable local shirt recommendations for your summer style. Plus, they check in with Mary Lucia, preview the upcoming Afro Punk Festival, unpack the insane memes of the Walker Teens Instagram, and much more. Sign up for their newsletter and get more reports from the Minneapolis and St. Paul arts and culture scene at dispatchmsb.com. That's dispatchmsb.com.
Aisha. Bye!
That reminds me.
Yeah.
Do you get irritated when people get your name wrong?
No, not really. I mean...
Because a lot of people are prone to say, "Aisha." I believe I have occasionally said it that way.
Yeah.
I finally have gotten the hang of not saying it that way.
So...
I think as a lesson to Ward 10 residents here...
Whoa!
It's Aisha.
So, my name, it's actually, like, I like to say, like, "Oh, like, Aisha is like the... It's like the Catherine of, like, Muslim names, you know, or like, the, what's a more basic white woman name?
Catherine is pretty basic.
Sure.
Becky?
Becky, it's the Becky of Muslim names, yes. So, like, Aisha was like, it's just like a religious figure in, like, in Muslim history, whatever. Anyway. So, the name itself is actually, like, it has, like, Arabic origins, and it's pronounced Ra-isha. Like, the word Ain actually does not exist in the English alphabet. And so, through the Muslim diaspora, right, like, we have different people who have different variations of that name, right? So, like, a part of the, like, American Muslim, like, community, like, the way that name is said is like, Aisha, right? Or like, like the song, like, "Aisha, Aisha, pass me my..."
I don't think I get that.
Never mind, never mind. Okay, okay, it's cool. It's cool, we'll get it later. And then, my... My family is, I'm Pakistani, right, and like, we speak Urdu, and our, like, very, our, like, our dialect essentially, right, or like, our language takes that Arabic word and makes it Aisha. And so, like, all of those names are, they're not wrong, right? Like, for most of my life, I actually went by Aisha, or like, from when I started, you know, going to, like, grade school until I graduated high school, like, I went by Aisha, because, like, people couldn't say Aisha correctly. Oh, my God, hi! Thank you. Okay, I guess we are campaigning. I can see your point. I can see your point.
Election's coming up soon.
Uh, you know, somebody has to decide to run for reelection the first...
You're not gonna have an opponent, right?
I don't know that, I don't, I think that, like, the decision to run for reelection is one that should be taken, like, really seriously when I decided to run for office, like...
Oh, you're not even...
I took that really, really seriously. No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that, like, I think that, like, the going assumption that, like, "Oh, we should, like, all, like, run for reelection, and like, should all just get this job, and no one's gonna run against us," is, like, silly, you know, it's just, I don't...
It was a silly question. But, just speaking...
Well, you're not the only one who's made that assumption.
I don't chit chat. I assume you won't have a serious opponent. That's my assumption.
Why?
Because I feel like your victory was fairly resounding.
Hi!
And I don't think you'll have a challenger.
I think that person actually was saying hi to you. First person who, like, actually just recognized you.
Somebody recognized me and not her.
I, like, waved back, and they were like, "I don't know who you are."
Now they know who you are. You're John's friend. But you probably won't have a challenger from the left. Pretty strong on the left. And so, it's a matter of whether someone to the right decides they wanna get 30 to 40 percent of them.
I mean, we're seeing some, like, I mean, we see, like, some of our best, like, champions on the left, whether they're in the legislature, whether they represent us in Congress, like, whatever it might be, like, get serious challengers from the right, and like, I don't see why, like, someone who votes the way that I do, and talks the way that I do, and fights for the people that I do, like, wouldn't receive, like, a credible challenge from the right.
Well, you'll get a wacky challenger. That's why Lisa Bender got a series of wacky challengers.
Yeah, I mean, they certainly made her life hard.
Are your people still gonna be at 28th Street?
Are my people still gonna be at 28th Street?
Yeah.
Oh, as in where we, oh, my God, I was like, what are you talking, like, that's, I don't live on 28th. I live on 27th. What are you talking about? Let's take a look. Oh, biking and driving, is that bad? You're biking and texting?
I can steer.
Okay.
I'm steering. So, assuming you may run for reelection, may, it's a big decision, it's still to come. What do you see as the thing that you'll be able to...
Hi!
Hello, Ryan Brown. We're podcasting. Bye!
Okay, bye!
So, what is the thing you hope to be able to say to people, "Look what I did with my abbreviated two-year term? Send me back," or "Congratulate me on a job well done"?
I mean, first of all, like, we actually are not doing anywhere nearly the amount of stuff that people need us to be doing right now. Like, the city of Minneapolis is failing its residents. Like, that is just absolutely true, and to try to spin it in a different way is absolutely bullshit. So, like, an acknowledgement, first of all, that, like, there is nothing any of us is doing right now that, like, meets the, like, level of crisis and urgency that, like, people are experiencing in their day-to-day lives. That's just, like, the honest fact. Second, like, there have been some really good things that I've been able to get done in my time here. And like, I'm four, I'm like, five months in. Like, it's been, like, it actually hasn't been a long time. But, in that time, um, you know, we have, like, posted office hours in every, um, like, in every single neighborhood in the ward. We, like, committed to, like, building a far more transparent and accessible culture in our office. Like, you know, like, whether you like us or you hate us, we respond to people's needs. We get back to people. We, like, connect them to the services that they need when they reach out to us. And then, like, more concrete wins include the fact that we got, like, the shelter, the Women's Shelter on 24th and Stevens, opened and funded. Like, it's, I mean, like, not fully there yet, but like, that was a fight. Like, we weren't gonna have 13 votes for it, and we did. We got... that was a, that was a fight. Like, we weren't gonna have 13 votes for it, and we did. We got, like, got it done unanimously. It was the first thing we took on in biz this year. And, like, we got $700,000 taken out of the, like, the Downtown Slush Fund for the criminally wealthy, and, like...
What is the Downtown Slush Fund?
Well, the Downtown Council and the Meet Minneapolis.
You took $700,000 away from the Downtown?
$700,000 away from the Meet Minneapolis budget and into, like, the B-TAP and C-TAP programs, our small business fund, essentially, right, to, like, to, 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 like, it's specifically aimed at not just our cultural corridors, but surrounding areas and people who need money. And, like, that fund started out with $500,000 two years ago, and it's, like, up to a million dollars in funding. That's, like, a big deal.
Yeah.
We got, like, 550, like, that was the thing that I did personally, right? Like, 550, like, signs to help make businesses in Minneapolis make the conversion from gendered restrooms to gender-neutral restrooms, right? And, like, that was money that came out of the Meet Minneapolis budget too, by the way. And, like, those are big deals. We, like, made it, so, we got twice the amount of representation for renters on the rent control, um, on the rent control work group than was initially proposed. That's a big deal. We got in Colinos Unidos por Justicia, Renters United for Justice, a seat on the rent control table. Like, we just, it's been through, like, we've gotten good wins done, and, like, they haven't been enough, and they never will be. And, like, we were never gonna, like, save people's lives through the city. We just are trying to, like, make people not die. And, like, that's what Minneapolis residents have been asking us for. We just have, like, really inadequate leadership that doesn't care about its people.
Are you optimistic for the future?
Am I optimistic for the future?
I think you have to say you are, because you're an elected official.
Some days, not all the time.
Some days I don't, I don't feel so great. I feel like, I feel like maybe we're in a bad place.
We are in a bad place. I don't know that I'm always optimistic. You know, and this is the thing, right? Like, I feel like sometimes I, like, I really struggle to, like, go out in public. I really struggle to, like, go to events and see people and, like, do the thing, because I get asked all of the time, like, "Oh, how's the job? Like, what are you doing? Like, how, like, what do you feel good about? What are you proud of?" And, like, frankly, most of my job is, like, trying to get bad things to not happen.
Yeah.
Not, like, proactively make good things happen, but to defend against, like, like, really regressive and harmful and, like, heartbreaking things, you know? And, like, it's not exciting. It's not, like, it's not, there isn't a lot to, like, feel, we're gonna have to stop. There isn't a lot to feel particularly good about. That's what I'm saying. I'm sorry.
Who do you recognize, me or her?
I'm so sorry, John. Nobody recognizes you. This is my friend Addie, this is Crystal, and you are?
Would anyone like a button? I would love a button.
So, we've been, like, you know, doing the Chatmobile thing?
Yeah.
And every time people stop us, like, John will be like, "Oh, like, did you recognize me?" And it's like, the answer is always "no," but, like, we have to, like, let poor John deal with it.
I hope he's a lawyer, if that helps. Okay. He didn't recognize me.
Addie is one of my, like, oldest friends.
Welcome. I met Addie at Yana's campaign for the first time briefly, Yana, 2017?
Yeah. That's how you and I met.
Yeah. It's amazing to think...
I went to high school with that person.
And just four years after that campaign, you were elected to the City Council. Meteoric rise, some would say.
Say that again?
Meteoric rise.
Meteoric rise.
Like, very fast, accelerated.
Meteor, like, okay. Sure.
Like a shooting star.
Yeah, you could say that, or you could say that I put in a lot of really hard work.
Yeah. But even, even the hardest workers among us have limitations to what we can accomplish in four years.
Yeah. If only we could, you know, get strong rent control now. That would be nice.
Are you optimistic about that? Because we don't have what you would call a council that's conducive...
Sure, this way. Yeah, you're welcome.
You're a very kind and generous driver.
Thanks.
But we don't necessarily have a council that's going to enact something that you agree with all the way. Like, are you looking for compromises?
I'm looking for policy that's gonna keep my constituents in their homes.
So, I hate to phrase it that way, but, like, half-measures? Like, where you're gonna take...
You know, I think in the same way that I am somebody who wants, like, the strongest possible rent control, there are people on the council who, like, frankly, we should be directing our energy at, who want no rent control ever, right? Like, a Portland-esque policy is too radical for them. And so, like, I promise you that, like, the material reality for, if we get, like, policy that we start to make, you know, usher through the city, people like me won't be the problem. People who think that, like, rent control is the worst policy ever imagined, those will be the problems. You know, nobody's asking them if they want to compromise.
Who is your favorite council member? Maybe, maybe not somebody we would expect outside of the, how many progressives do we have? Five? Four?
Yeah.
Outside of those, who can you say nice things about?
Who is my...
You come into work and you're like...
Favorite council member.
"I am so happy to see you, your smiling face when I walk in." Is there anyone?
You're gonna, you're gonna laugh. I will say, I'll say it. It's Lisa Goodman, dude.
And I feel like everyone's time is being taken up, including all of the people in the audience.
I learn so much from her every day. She's, she's been on the council as long as I've been alive. She's so smart and so good at what she does, and she doesn't get enough credit for being smart and good at what she does. We just make her, like, you have to respect the fact that she's, like, she, like, controls development in the city, and, like, it works the way she wants it to, you know? Like, she's, like, good at what she does. I don't know. I respect the fuck out of her.
I find her personally charming, but also to be a destructive force in the city. That's my take.
I, are you, if you're asking me if I have, if I agree with her or would take the same votes as her, like, rarely, but, like, you know, like...
She's very likable. I can see that. I'd like to hang out with Lisa Goodman.
Yeah.
If you would promise to be nice to me.
I don't know that, I don't know that you're ever gonna get that from her. I'm so sorry. I don't know that she likes you very much.
If she likes you, she can make you feel like the most important person in the world and, like, be your best friend, and you just have a great time together. But also, if she wants to make your life miserable, she can crush you.
I don't know how, I just experience her as, like, a colleague, right? Like, I, like, all of, all of the people that I work with have, like, things that are, things about them that are, like, very, like, likable and make them good coworkers, and every single one of them, me included, have, like, things about us that are, like, irritating, you know?
What's irritating about you? Can you be very vulnerable and honest? Do you even know? Because sometimes we don't know what's irritating about ourselves.
What is irritating about me? Well, a lot. I mean, I think that I, I think that I have, like, 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 I think I'm a difficult person to, like, like, spitball, like, I, I, I don't know. I'm, like, difficult in a lot of different ways, too, like all of us are. I, what is irritating? Well, do you have some feedback?
I'm not, like, I'm gonna say what's irritating about you. If I had anything, I don't have anything to say about you. I'll say what's irritating about me is I, I, so I have a little bit of anxiety, and I will try to, like, insert, if I'm looking for funny comments to make all the time, and that can be irritating. Like, nobody wants the jokes thing.
That's interesting, yeah.
That's my internal view of me. Maybe people don't find this irritating about me, but...
No, I mean, I don't know that I've experienced you that way. I, I think the thing that's, like, difficult about me is, like, I, like, I just, like... I, I, like, I read everything. I, like, know, I, like, like, know all of the things that I could possibly know about a thing before entering a conversation, and it makes it really, really difficult to, like... You know, I feel like, especially if I, like, really don't like something or have, like, a strong, like, ideological or personal disagreement with it, like, I think it's, like, really, really, like, difficult and frustrating to, like, to try to, you know, like, not have it feel antagonistic. I don't know. I try to not be hard on myself about that. That shit's racist, too, and, like, it's gendered, like, nobody, you know?
It's a great closing question. What's irritating about you?
What's irritating about you? A lot of things. I'm an irritating human being. I get that. It's cool. My job is probably the most irritating thing about me. That would've been the easy answer.
I know. Like, people are happy to see you at Open Streets, right?
So far, yeah. So far, people have been nice.
Should I allow Jason to sit in the chair?
Jason. Oh, my God! Jason! Jason!
Jason might be working. That's the Lena table, right?
Oh, like, they're, they're, like...
Keeping in mind that we're still recording.
Hello, President.
Hi. Did you want to sit in the chair? Or are you on the clock?
I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm on the clock.
You're on the clock? I'm on the clock, I guess, in, in some ways.
Keeping in mind that we're still recording.
Oh, I've said some things today.
What is your, who's your least favorite neighborhood org? You can't say that, can you? That's an unfair...
You're asking me?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna answer that.
Oh, the one that just got redistricted out, right? You can say that one?
Of course, I would never say that about them.
Well, that's a bad...
You know, I still go to the, you know, I would not, I'm not answering that.
Favorite neighborhood org?
Well, I feel a little ganged up on, because I'm hanging out with wedge people, so...
I mean, you are, you are, you did just invite over the president of La Rie Hill East.
I would've thought a far-left extremist would be president of La Rie Hill East.
A far-left extremist.
Yeah, Jason Garcia.
Yeah. I will, given the state of the politics in the city, I will wear that title proudly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Believing in things like people having housing, people being able to afford food. People being able to survive without having to own a car. It definitely makes me an extremist.
Or, like, just, like, live and, like, walk down the street without, like, fear of dying, being murdered.
Yeah, I mean, thinking that people should have healthcare.
Wow.
I've lived here since 2012, and I think we've come a long way here in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Neighborhood org.
Oh, I was like, you do? I don't know. I feel like people are poorer and less of them can live here. I wouldn't...
Well, that's Jason's problem now.
Yeah, that's, that's something that I'm working on.
It's Jason's MPD now, is what I say.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah. As you know, I run the Minneapolis Police Department.
Right, yeah.
Just solely, in the 10th ward, I run the Minneapolis Police Department.
Yeah, and within the boundaries of the wedge, I'm second in command.
Yes, that's right. We've deputized you.
This is so interesting.
Yeah!
We're podcasting.
It's, uh, it's called the Chatmobile. Yeah.
My guest has been Aisha Chugdi, who is, who is going off to be a celebrity at Open Streets. And I'm hoping to find Marion Green somewhere here today. What should I ask Marion Green?
Uh, ask her, ask her, I don't know. Ask her about something. Ask her about the 4, I'm sure you'll talk about the 4-3 conversion.
Yeah, we were talking about Lindell. Thank you.
Good for you.
See ya.